There's all these things in motion, including the weather, and it might be some pretty nasty weather on its way. And so, we're gonna have, we're gonna make an attempt at nine o'clock. And I'm just gonna say that, there's no, but, uh, we'll see what happens, but yeah, we've got some weather considerations coming in. So unfinished business, consider approval of the budget priorities, KJ. It's all yours.
Okay. I was gonna tell you, I'm really excited, there's still people in the audience, 'cause usually when I get up to speak, everybody has left the room and nobody cares what I have to say. So, I'm just really excited. Um, and I know you're all waiting in anticipation to talk about where we're gonna draw the line, but I kinda wanted to review how we got here, before we move forward in what that line actually looks like. So, given the current state funding that's been approved, we know that we're gonna have additional funds over the next three years, assuming we don't have a huge decline in enrollment. We're going to have additional funds over the next three years. One thing that's nice about that is it gives us an opportunity to put back in place a process where we actually can get some community input as to where our budget priorities should lie. No different than the reconfiguration committee, it's kinda nice to have that input from the community. So, the vehicle we used this year was the district site council. And they began their process investing quite a bit of time in learning about the district issues with, the issues with the district, our students, our challenges, our strengths, our weaknesses. Many, many things that encompassed all the things that we deal with every day from the district standpoint. And then we gave every program and every department an opportunity to present in front of the district site council up to three requests. No parameters around what those requests could be as far as dollars, but we did ask that they support their request with, "How much money am I gonna need? Why is it needed? How is it good for students?" And then try to focus on the three priorities that we kinda call, that we deal with as far as board goals, state outcomes, and then the district budget priorities. So how would, how would my request kinda fall in line with all of those things? So, um, once all those presentations were given, the district site council had a very difficult job. They had to prioritize twenty-nine requests, one point six million dollars, I believe, um, and kinda prioritize those from one to twenty-nine. The problem being, all of the requests, they weren't really wants, they were needs. They were things that our students need, that are good for the district, maybe things that have been cut previously through budget, program budgeting. Um, so it, it's hard when there are so many wants that are, or so many needs that are all at the same level, how do you prioritize and stratify into twenty-nine different levels? It's very difficult. But they did a great job, and again, we gave them not a lot of direction or guidance, other than kind of looking at those three things again. What are our budget, what are our district goals? What are the state outcomes? And then what are our district budget priorities? Given those parameters, how would you rank these twenty-nine items? So, based on the voting results, we got 'em all ranked, that went to the superintendent's leadership team. We took a look at it, kinda did a sanity check on it, and we showed those to you last board meeting, in the same order that the district site council gave 'em to us. And I'll be honest with you, they probably weren't the way I would rank 'em. And I'm gonna guess they weren't the way many of, or some of the leadership team looked at it and said, "And I probably wouldn't have done it that way." But respecting the process and taking a look at what the committee had done, was there anything that was grossly out of place, out of line, and it just not makes sense? We couldn't find anything like that. That's why we presented to, presented it to you, just 'cause we had it. So, last, um, budget meeting, I showed you this. This is the twenty-nine items, again ranked in voting order, along with the amount of requests by each program. And you can see that I've drawn a line between the white lines and the gray lines. Given the budget that we have for next year, given the money that we're gonna set aside for salary adjustments and other things that we know we need to account for, there's about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that we were able to allocate this year. That's about eighteen percent of what was requested, that one point six million dollars. It's not a lot, but it's something. And I'll just kinda remind you, we didn't get here, we didn't get into this little hole that we're in in one year. It was a considerable amount of reductions and budget cuts and revamping and reprogramming things. So hopefully, we will get back to that point in a couple of years where we can be maybe where we were before. But all of these things that weren't funded, we'll have an opportunity to come back next year, because there should be additional funds available next year that we can allocate. So these, these items plus any additional ones that they wanna recommend, we'll have another opportunity to go through this same process. Um, I would kinda reiterate what you guys were talking about on the reconfiguration committee. I just wanna publicly thank the district site council for their work. I think they did an amazing job. Um, you know, a year ago, we asked the district site council to help prioritize the board strategic plan, and I think that group did a great job as well. I think this group was probably even more engaged, and I think maybe one of the reasons is what we just heard from all of those people on the reconfiguration committee, their passion for what they were doing, their ability to feel like they were involved, that their voice was heard. Um, I'm, I'm hopeful that that's kinda why we had even better participation on the second district site council. Um, so to me, that was really encouraging. It's not a perfect process. Um, it, you know, we're trying, we're starting it at square one and revamping a little bit, and we'll continue to get better. Um, that's kinda how we got here and where we are. Any questions on any of that process?
Four questions.
I don't know if it's a question, but I, I feel like since we've had such outreach from the committee to talk about the full-time principals with the, you have Clymel, potentially Jenny Barker, that we should have, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but look at discussing that a little more, and feeling that out, so I, it, it was one of the choices on the list, I believe.
Like, third below the line, something like that?
Uh, eight. Yeah, it was. Eight and nine, if you look at.
Eight and nine.
Well, because one would've been for Clymel and one would've been for, well, um, yeah. The Clymel and, and a, excuse me, the Clymel and Jenny Barker one.
Sorry.
Um, is the one that fell.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Okay. Well, um, let's see. Before we get into that one, Ken, is there any other questions? I don't know. I don't know if I'm late, but I'm not.
I just wanna get home before the storm.
Yeah, I know.
This is a purpose to start speaking about it, we should, and if not, I just wanna make sure it gets talked about.
Thank you for that.
In the near future, so.
Yeah. Uh, any questions about process for KJ, or whether she's holding out funds on this a little bit, or any fun stuff like that? I'm having fun, KJ.
I've, I've given up the money tree, I can't, I've looked for it, I can't find it.
Okay.
Were there any schools not represented on the site council this year, or, I mean, 'cause I know last year, when I was on it, we had a few holes here and there. Um, like, I know Mike Avanch came for the chamber, but we didn't necessarily have somebody from the board itself. I ended up doing that too, as a support of education and chamber board too. But, I mean, were there any glaring gaps for people who we didn't have on the council?
As far as building representation?
I guess overall.
Overall. Um, I think we probably had better representation this year than we did on the first one. I believe every building was represented, is that?
Yeah. Last year, we had one school that didn't even give us a person for a while. We finally did get someone from that school, but I don't know that they attended. But this year, we had much, much, much easier time getting appointments from the schools, and even from our community people that we went to, and our attendance overall was better at all of those meetings this year.
Thank you.
Uh, other general comments of that nature?
I have a question. In those meetings we served on the, um, or maybe that was presented, and also this committee as well, and I've really struggled with, um, this dinner that has come across the board, and just because of this, I mean, and obviously the budget's really important, we were presented with so many things that are very, very important. And so I'm just wondering, when I look at a, a committee that met six months, like twelve, possibly twelve meetings, except two meetings per month, so, versus a committee that met four times, and then I completely ended at school, is that correct? They did four meetings and? I know, I mean, I only just talked to one other, um, community member, and I did say it was quite overwhelming, you kinda get bombarded with information, and I know even as a former member, I feel like I'm still learning and trying to figure things out. So I'm just wondering, and I don't mean to push on the spot, Tim, I'm sorry, but what, how do you feel about the processes?
Well, I've been puzzled since I got up. Um, it, the, the last meeting did feel a little rushed, because it was such a waiting meeting, where we quickly did our prioritizing. I think that the mechanism with the coins that she came up with, to me, was ingenious. Um, it, it was a quick way to, to articulate your, your priorities. Um, I felt a little constrained about asking the questions, but I tend to over-ask anyway. Um, it, it's frustrating to me to see the cutoff lines are high. Um, you know, I've sat here on a meeting multiple times, and when we had spinning decisions, that we had an either-or decision, we just didn't know what the or was. Well, now we do. And that, I find frustration in that, because, like, I think most of the people there, these aren't wants, these are needs. Um, but I felt like the process, it's my first, first time in it, um, is that how I would prioritize, seems to know. But I felt comfortable enough with the process, that I'm inclined to support it, um, the way that it's written. Um, I do wanna have follow-up conversation now about the, the full-time principal that , uh, that two, uh, two rural schools, now that we've had multiple public comments about it. But I don't know how you fit that in this.
If we get to that in a second.
Can we ask the same question to Ms. Birnfeld, 'cause she was on both, from an educator's standpoint?
I wish you would've left that one when I got up.
How did she feel about the process? Is that a question?
Yeah. Oh my God.
You were in both of them, right?
I was in both of them, yes, but one as an educator and one as a parent. And I really did take my role in that way specifically. Um, so, I do, um, I forgot, because I say ditto Mr. Hannigan's comments about the last meeting, um, because both my husband and I discussed things after the meeting, um, because just 'cause he's a wife of an educator, he's a husband and a, a parent first. And so, it was so interesting, the way he saw things versus the way I saw things, 'cause I see things from classroom out, student needs out, and he sees things as his little boys first. Um, so, um, they were both overwhelming with information. I don't think in either way, um, you could, you could say one was higher than the other. Um, but, I mean, I think, I liked the way they both ran, they ran differently. Um, I do think that there wasn't as much discussion in the district's site council, and I don't know if it's just 'cause we didn't ask, um, 'cause we could've, there was time where, um, Dr. Carlin and Scott, they asked, "Is there questions? Is there questions?" I think sometimes your brain is just so full, you don't know what questions to ask. Um, yeah.
So, was your role on the site council, the parent role, or were you?
I was a parent of a, of a three-year-old at the KPP program with Garfield.
Okay.
Yeah. So I was really making sure, uh, when I looked at presentations, like, would this affect my child, what school he would go to currently with the house we're in, um, those were like things that my husband thought first. And even some of the questions I came back with on the second day for Dr. Carlin, those were questions I never would've thought of, but my husband, who drops a kid off at school every day and fights parents in the parking lot, you know, he wants to know the bus question, he wants to know those questions, because for him, those are things he sees while I'm inside of the classroom with twenty-five kids. I don't know what bussing looks like, you know, and I don't know what that job is, or, you know, things like that, but those are things he thinks of first, 'cause his kid's gonna get on a bus, and he's gonna get off the bus, and does that technology matter, and is that a safety issue? You know, um, his kid is someone that might need social emotional help, you know, down the road, and, um, he put those things first, whereas an educator, you know, some of those lot, the ones we were presented on the last day, I don't know if activities is gonna affect him fifteen years down the road while we're here, you know, and so like, as a parent, you see these things differently than you do as a classroom educator, where I would put, you know, supplies pretty high, or, you know, robotics pretty high, 'cause those are things that I think sixth graders need, but I really served as a parent. And so I really tried to take my role as, what as a parent, would this affect my child versus, um, on the other committee where it was, what was best interest for my students, and curriculum-driven. I've served a lot of time, and the district has given me funding to become a better educator, um, and so I really focused on that aspect. Um, and I think maybe some choices would've been different with my coins, if I were looking as an educator, but I wasn't, I was looking at this as a parent, and what was important for kids.
So, on each, on each one of these, I'm assuming that you guys would have someone get up and say, "This is why I need an additional counselor at the high school," is that correct?
Yeah.
So you went through each item, someone got up?
And they needed to connect it to a board goal, or, um, and how come in some way? For example, um, I'm sorry, is it Charlie, Charlie still in? From the, um, this is just the one I remember quickly off my hands. He said it was really hard for him to connect to a board goal, 'cause transportation isn't something with education, you know, it, it does have to do with the safety, and so he kinda took it in that way. Or, um, the gentleman that does the grounds.
John Cox.
Yeah, as far as like the snow removal vehicles, like, that doesn't directly affect the classroom and a board goal that you might have come up with, but that does directly affect if we're gonna have school or not. So, you know, s- some of those things you had to kind of take into consideration, just 'cause it didn't exactly connect to a board goal, was that something that we were looking for, so.
Thank you for, for that information. Other, uh, general comments before we get into one of those items?
Do you have a question? I'm so sorry to get this to both of you before, so you may not be able to answer it tonight, but, um, I know just a, a big core goal outside of this is the Avid program, and I'm wondering if the Avid program is gonna build, be built into class schedules at the middle schools? Or that's possibly, is that an after-school program for those?
Well, well, it'll be an after-school program, so, we, we're scheduled to do Avid training, um, next September with, um, all, all secondary staff. Um, the, uh, Avid elective is taught as a separate class, that, uh, only certain students will have in their schedule, and that will continue.
In the middle school level?
At the middle school level, as well as the high school. And we will, um, all teachers will be trained in Avid strategies. So, the principals and I right now, we're meeting monthly, basically to kinda talk about how we, um, make sure that implementation goes well. Um, so, we have the resources in place to do Avid. Um, in fact, if there's nothing Avid up here, um, shouldn't, shouldn't stop us from making the steps to do that.
That's just my question, I think, because I was gonna sure, if, have they already been training in September, if it would be a viable, like, type class, like, they had it planned for now, so I'm wondering how they were gonna fit that in, if it would end up being.
It's alr- it's already.
It's already, yes.
It is.
And actually, the Avid elective teachers have to go to Avid's summer training. The training we're doing is, that they still have to go to the summer, so just the elective, just the teachers that teach the elective class. All the other teachers would use those Avid strategies.
Just in every day?
In every day.
Okay.
Are there any other things that possibly affect, just about training?
It's expensive, but we budgeted for.
I know we talked about it once.
We budgeted for it for two years, because, um, 'cause we had a board with a calendar committee, 'cause it has to be standardized back-to-back training. So it's, uh, it's expensive, but it's cheaper than sending eight coordinators to the gym. But I can't, I'll have to have that happen. It's, it's, yeah, it's very expensive. It's per strand, and we're bringing in about fifteen.
And it's per teacher that goes through, remember who goes through the training? But it's, like Renee said, just the registration fee is cheaper than sending people, and if you send them, then you have travel, hotel, post.
And that actually was money that we set aside, were PD dollars that were, that the board directed us to, uh, last year. Like she said, we've been kinda putting this, it's been on the radar, so we knew that we were gonna have it, um, we just had to wait till, with the calendar committee, make those two days happen together. So the money is set aside.
Right. And I was just wondering how that was gonna, 'cause I knew the training was a little bit later, so I just was thinking to myself about after-school programs, if they're gonna be set for it, so, okay. Thank you.
Uh, other general comments? I, uh, I, I do wanna say that I am a little shocked on a couple of things that didn't appear on the list, but I guess I approached that as somehow there was a process following the things on the list.
Each program had a committee whereby, for example, elementary, um, every elementary principal was, um, hold as to, you know, what would you like, what would you like for us to add? And they, as a committee, decided what three requests they wanted to make.
Okay.
So they may have had five, but we only allowed three. So they had to decide and prioritize, even at that subcommittee level, what are we gonna ask for?
And then another question, if it's a multi-building, uh, like you have middle school instruction, if it's something that covers high school, middle school, and whole program, who would've been the entity that had it on the list?
It would depend on what it is. If you're looking at middle school, that would encompass, um, the actual middle schools, KH and Horace Good, then it also included the intermediate centers, Brandon, Susan, and Charles Stone. So those, uh, again, those four principals got together and collaborated, decided what they wanted to put on that. So, anything that had to do with instruction at those levels would've been asked at that level. If it's something that's gonna cover all levels, um, for example, robotics, um, that was actually brought up by two, it was brought up by elementary and it was brought up by technology. So we put it into one and requested it as one, 'cause I didn't want the two to compete with each other.
And then, two other big comments. One is, just to confirm, that, um, this is gonna be a multi-year process, we expect.
Absolutely.
So, it makes, does make the cut this year, there'll be another process, and we'll see where it comes out, where we're at. Um, and then the other point is, if the community thinks it's important enough to change that line or lower it, in other words, add to the funds that we think we need to hit some of those things, we have that option too. That's a very difficult option to consider, 'cause we have to raise, know that is, there might be, there might be something, some cap there that still exists, and we just can't do it.
Right. And I actually, we've budgeted for next year, we are at the max of what we can do on the level. So we have, it's.
Okay, so there you go. We did put thirty-three percent.
We could with a vote, but we probably wouldn't be able to get that done for next year, probably, so.
So there's, there's a variable there anyway, but logistically, I, I guess one other comment is that this seems to be early in the budget process, that we are considering this. But when it comes to the fact that there are higher positions to be created and people are hired, so we may even be a little late on that, from the standpoint of, uh, trying to find warm bodies to put in that position. Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
You are correct, because, because our request would be that you approve where we've drawn the line, and then also approve the positions that would be related to those items that we're requesting funding for.
To those positions.
So that Keith can start working.
With that said, there was a request of, of, we talked about the Jenny Barker, uh, full-time principal, like, item that is not above the line. I've got a pair of legislators here, but, um, so, we had a present, we had a public comment today relating to that, uh, and a number of us have received some comments. So I guess I would open that up to somebody in line to make a comment, or a question or whatever.
How would that work?
How would what work?
I'm asking KJ, if we, if we had to, if we moved something up in priority, and we dropped your little white lines down, um, our two levels, how does that affect your budgeting, your salaries, and, not your salaries, but where would that come?
Well, uh, like you talked about before, if we were to decide to fund something else that's not currently being funded, it would have to come some, from somewhere else. Um, so we would have to change what we've maybe set aside for salaries, or if you're gonna swap one for another, that's different. Um, you know, if you chose to say, "Hey, we don't wanna fund this, but we do wanna fund this," um, so.
So for me, Mark, I, I can't make a decision without knowing where it's coming from. And it doesn't seem like this is the right time, this isn't the right setting to do that. I mean, for me, I think, I, I would support including the recommendation as it stands tonight, and then if we decided we wanted to try to have a full-time position at the two rural schools, I would like a presentation from KJ and Dr. Carlin about where that money would come from, and what we're gonna cut, um, to make that happen.
Thank you for that comment. Other comments?
I'm curious to, to hear from Laura and Jennifer. They had students at schools that haven't had full-time principals. So I would appreciate a conversation about the, just the issue of not having a full-time administrator.
You know, it's not, I'm only just speaking about. And I, and that, my first point I was gonna say is that, at this point, I'm speaking about it as a parent, and then I need support from the board to look at it as a board member, because it's harder for me to do that. Um, Jessie was in kindergarten with a full-time principal, so we had a year, Jenny Barker was full-time, and then, uh, and then from that on, we've had part, a principal half-time. And, and there's been postage to it, especially when you've had principals that are involved, and, and, uh, it feels like they're there most of the time, it, it almost doesn't feel like they're part-time, but there's a lot of situations where, um, like, kind of spoke from the Clymel parents, where there was disruptive student in the classroom. Um, I know that, uh, Jessie had a situation where they missed their Christmas party because they had to be pulled from the classroom because of disruptive student, but also, there wasn't a principal available, so teachers were pulled out from that classroom to go, say the head teacher, to go deal with those duties that a principal would normally take on. And, so that's part of the safety issue there too, kids don't feel safe, or if there's an outside danger coming in, there's just not that extra person there to help with that. And that also comes into where there's a sub shortage. Um, you may already have one of your extra teachers pulled into a regular classroom because we don't have a sub that day, so, again, there's another spot where, well, your head teacher may not be available because they're helping with that, when they, they can't fill in those principal duties.
That's a small team problem.
Right, right, right. And that's how both those schools are. Distance from town was brought up. Uh, I know Jenny Barker's not as far out for emergency vehicles to get there, but it is through the house, but with Clymel, I felt like that was an important issue I hadn't thought of. Um, another thing that I, why Mike has been at Jenny Barker, we've had four different principals. I feel like perhaps maybe the turnover rates a little higher when you have a part-time principal in that position, um, because there, it's often been a step up, I mean, a step for them to get up to a bigger school, so in their mind, it's not a long-term position. And that's not what's best for kids, to have that change, have that consistency. And I believe our full-time principal, before she left, had been there for quite a few years, if I remember correctly.
I don't know, so I have to add teams, it's not good for teams.
Right. And that's, my next was recruitment of teachers. I worry sometimes that it's harder for us to get teachers hired to those smaller schools, because there's only a principal available half the time. And they only have one classroom per grade, so there's even less of that team. So to have that full-time principal there to support them, I think, would be important. I think that's, I made notes, and then I can't remember what I said. Those are, those are, that's my argument for discussing it more. Uh, I feel like the negative is funding. I mean, and maybe that outweighs more than the positives, the need for it, but, um, I think our rural schools are great schools. I think it's nice to have that small studying option, because we are a rural community with big city problems, which I've said before, so I think it's good that we have schools that, that cater to the, the rural type environment, but we also have our variety size of elementary schools, or like Buffalo Jones, that can have Spanish tracks, and I think it's important to have that type of variety too. And the only way it's gonna allow that and keep those schools there is to make sure we have a strong staff and support team for our teachers.
Okay, Laura?
As the parent of the disruptive student.
I wasn't talking to you.
No, I'm, I'm, my, my kid was the disruptive student. Um, you know, I, I remember getting a call saying he didn't get to buy a book at the book fair, so he threw a shoe at the kindergarten teacher. And I-
I'm like, great, um, he loved to throw shoes. Um, it would have been incredibly helpful to have a consistent voice for the discipline, um, because you had, he went through, I think, three different lead teachers while he was there, um, and of course, we had three different, because we started, I think, a year after your, your oldest did. Um, so, um, it, it's frustrating. Um, and that first year, it was particularly frustrating because the principal was at both Jenny Barker and Plaimel. So we're not even dealing with a, uh, what ended up at one point being a Bernadine Sitz, Jenny Barker transport, we're dealing with Jenny Barker to Plaimel transport, um, that first year, which proved, I think, very, a, a huge issue, which is why we changed it the second year, um, of having that part-time, part-time principal. Um, I think it's very important to have a full-time principal there, but I'm also looking at all of these other things, thinking, you know, that additional counselor could help somebody get a scholarship, um, at the high school level. Um, you know, adding a nurse, you know, we've got a part-time nurse at Jenny Barker. I've got two kids with asthma, I would really like to have a full-time nurse out at Jenny Barker too. Um, I know that's not for that, but I'm just.
You can bring that up next year.
Yeah, um, you know, um, so is it important, if our line was lower, sorry, if our line was at the recruiting coordinator and having a full-time principal, I would have no problem saying it needs to swap. Um, because in my mind, unless that recruiting coordinator can bring me mountains or water, I don't know where, we're still going to have a lot of the same issues that we currently have with recruiting, but maybe putting that full-time principal would help with recruiting as Jennifer outlined. Um, but we're not at that level, unfortunately, and I don't know that that position would outweigh the things that we have. Plus, there's a huge, um, gap between number five and number eight. If it were closer, I think that would be something to look at too. But number five had forty-one votes total and number eight had twenty-nine. So I think, and if, that's definitely a cutoff there in my mind as well. Um, is it needed? Yes, it's definitely needed. We need to have a consistent discipline and team person at both of those schools. Can we do it this year? It doesn't look like we can, and I understand that, unfortunately. Um, but I think it's needed. And, I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of Mr. Bacham's, um, comment, but I heard a lot of it, just so you know, um, and I read your email. And thank you so much, and I think I responded back to you, but thank you so much for being here today and participating, um, and making your voice heard, I really appreciate that.
I'd have to add, it's what makes the district really function well, is all of that interaction, so thank you as well, I would echo, echo that. I do want to say that all my kids went through Jenny Barker in both under conditions, a full-time principal or a part-time principal. It's clearly far better to have a full-time principal for the reasons that it brings us, um, you know, and that I have a heart for that. Um, I also have a heart for just about everything on that list, some that are on that list. Um, so I really, first of all, I really appreciate all the comments. I do want to keep open though, uh, the discussion, if there's more discussion about the country schools. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, every year we have schools come and talk in front of us and, and the principal's the leader of the school, and you can see the pride especially tonight in, uh, Mrs. Baker's, uh, position at greater school with, I, I fully believe we need to have a full-time principal there. As I, as I look at this whole list, none of those are requesting a half-time counselor, a half-time nurse, you know, so maybe we can compromise, maybe we could have a full-time principal at Plaimel, um, this coming year, and, you know, find money to do it at the next school. You know, I don't, I don't think this has to be so cut and dry. I spoke to Dr. Carlin on the phone, you know, and I was surprised, and it's way down there on the list for plant facilities, a truck with a dump bed, and most people don't even understand the importance of that piece of equipment, you know, and only five people voted for that, you know, and I said, you know, even if you had five hundred people on there, you're still going to have the same, you know, I wish my item got promoted and got up to the top. Um, you know, I, I think a full-time principal is so important at all schools, and as the committee that did the cake, the configuration, they said all schools would look the same, cake to five, six to eight. So that means all schools would have a full-time principal, in my opinion. I, I could be wrong, um, you know, so I, I say we need to start now, uh, you know, if anything, if we could at least start with one, and then some way find enough money later in the year or next year to have the other school full-time. You know, I, I just don't know how, and, and my kids didn't go to either one of those schools, but I don't know how you can have a part-time principal and a head teacher that's teaching school and a kid being disruptive, and the teacher needs to send him somewhere, but where does he send him? She can't send him to the head teacher because she's teaching class, so to me, it seems like maybe discipline isn't the same at those schools than it is at others.
Could I, could I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Dr. Carlin, the way we handle that today with the part-time principal, is there any special consideration of that half-time service from one school to the other? Are they principal first and assistant principal, principal second?
Right, so, so Mrs. Finch and, and Mrs. Merle have both been told, your, your primary job is being principal at your school and your principal. So even though your job says you're half and half, if there's something going on and you need to spend more time and if you're a school that you're principal of them, that has to be the priority. Um, so there is, there, there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're able to be there, uh, you know, it, it's, it is twenty minutes away. Um, but there's also more to this than just the, the fractions of people. There's differences in all of our school in terms of the type of discipline, the student demographics, the population, um, and I, and I, and I'm thrilled that, uh, that we have parents who are, I had a couple of parents come and talk to me, uh, about this. Uh, we've had a couple of parents, three parents now addressed more. Uh, I'm thrilled that we have people that recognize the value that the administrator brings to the school. Um, that is wonderful, um, to, to know that. I wish we could afford to do everything we need to do right now. Um, no matter what we choose, there are going to be people who feel like their needs are not being met. Um, KJ said we're, we're funding eighteen percent, I think, of the requests, and, uh, and so, uh, I, I understand the pain, um, I, I wish we could solve all these at, at one point, um, right now, um, but it is, we, at least, we hope at least three years more of the state fulfilling their funding plan, and if they're, if the law stays the way it is, there'll be adjustments for inflation going forward. Um, you'll get some more information at the next meeting about kind of what school finance in Kansas is all about, you know, maybe.